I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Before we start, I was gonna turn it over to Elliot if he wanted to say a few words.
Well, okay. We all know what this is about because we've talked about it before. The one thing I want to emphasize is that this public hearing, this public hearing is not about six senses. It's about a moratorium. If people have comments about six senses, what they should do is wait until the general meeting, which will follow this. At the end of the general meeting, there's a public comment session, and that's where people, the public can speak about any issues that are related to the town, including six senses. Okay? You can voice your opinions about six senses, whether it's a good idea, a bad idea, indifferent, what have you. But the public hearing is very strictly focused on whether we should have a six-month moratorium that will put a stop to any new applications. New, the key word, new applications for conference centers, hotels, or motels. This does not pertain to the three applications for conference centers that are already in progress, one of which is six senses. Okay? So if your interest isn't speaking about six senses as a project, that's fine. You're welcome, more than welcome, to express an opinion. But please hold it until the end of the meeting, which would be the proper time.
Thank you. Our town clerk will read their legal notice.
Please take notice that the Town of Clinton will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, at the Town of Clinton Town Hall, 1215 Center Road, Reinbeck, in the Town of Clinton, New York, at 6:25 PM prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter is reached on the agenda concerning proposed local law number one of 2025 entitled, Conference Center Hotel and Motel Moratorium pursuant to Article 16 of the New York Town Law. This local law will take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. Complete copies of the proposed local law are available at the Town of Clinton Clerk's Office for inspection during regular business hours. All interested persons and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard on said proposal at the daytime and place aforesaid.
Thank you. I make a motion to open the floor to public comment. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Anyone who would like to speak on this moratorium may do so now.
Graham would like to.
Yeah. Graham Trask, 68 Fiddler's Bridge Road, Statsburg, New York. Our town's at a pivotal point. In business terms, we have a burning platform in this town. Tonight's meeting is evidence of that. It's incumbent upon residents and town leadership to fix the problems in our town. This moratorium is tantamount to letting the horse out of the barn and closing the doors behind it. It's vital that our town supervisor and our town board has the goal of providing leadership that's required to get our town back on track and focused on the key fundamental values and visions that our residents want. My vision for the town is as follows, and in short focuses on getting back to the basics of our town and our town government. We need to ensure that the Town of Clinton remains true to its rural character, values, and historic heritage. We need to make sure that the town is true to its vision statement, which is retaining a peaceful rural community with a small-town atmosphere and natural beauty. We need to support and help promote the agriculture industry in our town, which reflects our historical roots. We need to support and promote smart growth and development in our town, as is consistent with our comprehensive plan and the rural character of our town, especially small, local, independent businesses. I'm not anti-development. In fact, I am a developer and a real estate investor. And as we've seen, there are some development in appropriate areas, especially by small, local, independent businesses, that enhance the town, are consistent with our comprehensive plan, and retain its special character. We need to ensure that our zoning laws and zoning codes align with our comprehensive plan and are legally clear. We need to ensure that our zoning codes are enforced so as to ensure that indiscriminate development doesn't occur. We need to run our town in a fiscally responsible manner with the goal of minimizing cost increases resulting in lower property taxes. We need to ensure that all town residents and voters are heard, their input is taken into consideration, acted upon, and that they are provided an opportunity to give that input. And finally, we as a town need to stand up against large corporate interests that want to take advantage of loopholes in our code and enabled to do so by a weak town board and town supervisor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Oates. I'm the president and CEO of the Hudson Valley Economic Development Corporation. And I'm just here to talk from what impacts that moratoriums have on development, not just for your community, but what it could mean to the wider Hudson Valley economy. We have a number of projects and investors that are looking to do projects all throughout the region, and I ask you to take great care in thinking about putting a moratorium in place because it can send a message to the wider community that the Hudson Valley in New York State is not a place to invest and that there's hurdles that make it impossible to move forward. You have policies, you have procedures in place that can review projects as they move forward. We ask that you follow those procedures that are in place, that you put all applicants in front of, and that you take a hard look and consideration what the impact of a moratorium would say to the wider business community. So thanks again for your time.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
And anyone else?
Thank you. Thank you for proposing this moratorium. I was struck by the purposes noting that the existing procedures and laws should ensure that redevelopment, redevelopment are in accordance with the town's objectives. I think that's great. I know, as you know, we all know, this has been something that we've worked at. And just to address the last comment that I brought along with me, because I'm not an expert in moratoria, but there's a government publication, Division of the New York State Department of State called Land Use Moratoria, which you probably have seen, and it says, why do we have moratoria? And it's to prevent the rapid development, prevent inefficient and ill-conceived growth, prevent hasty decisions that would disadvantage the public, and prevent the media construction that might be inconsistent with their plan. And I think that's really the basis of the moratorium. I do notice, however, in this publication, they talk about the structure of this law, and the way these laws are usually structured based on this publication, and just a little, you know, is that they apply across the board to all new permits, permits, not applications, just permits. And then there's a provision that would give an opportunity for someone who has a hardship to demonstrate that it would be a particular hardship. The way that you propose the law is not that, and so it actually kind of undermines the purpose of the moratorium. I also, I know it's another agenda item, but I just want to mention that it's very puzzling to adopt a moratorium, you know, in one law and then propose changes to those very definitions in another law, you know, conference center and hotel. So I'm not sure if that's a race to the whatever, whatever law gets passed or however that works. But anyway, I just want to put that as a preface. My real question is, and I know I'm not supposed to ask questions, from here, however, I just maybe you feel...
There's no guarantee you'll answer.
You could ask.
...is the process after a moratorium is imposed? Because we went through this, and then there was maybe an ad hoc discussion group, and then, you know, Elliot proposed that we have a committee, and that was voted down, and there was a desire to do, you know, have a law considered publicly. So I guess my, I'll leave it floating out there. My question would be, what would be the next steps in terms of creating a law, looking at a law? Would there be a committee? Would there be a public hearing? Would there be a public process? I guess committees add on to work unless things have changed since February. But that would be something that would be really important to know, because if you've put a moratorium, and again, I really think the law's pretty clear, the best way to go about it is across the board to all the permits. But regardless, then what? You know, how does the public get involved? How do, you know, do you guys decide what's best and then present it? Like, what would come up next?
I would say that there was a committee that worked on this, a discussion group. And so a couple of documents did come out of that, which we have seen and used as a basis for writing a new law that isn't finished yet. There will be a public hearing on it when this time, when we have a final document that we all, the attorney has seen, we've all commented on. There will be a chance, at least a month, for everyone to see it, a public hearing. It's a zoning law, so we would go to Dutchess County Planning as well, and native comments.
And would you have any timing on that, or?
Couple of months, I hope.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we'll have a good draft at that point to present.
Yeah.
September is probably unrealistic, but I think October.
I agree.
Is realistic, yes.
Any other comments? Going once. It's hard for me to count to three. I make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, meeting adjourned. So we will now move on to the regular meeting. I call that to order, and we will start with the approval of amendments. Elliot?
Excuse me. Yeah. I'll move that we accept the minutes from the July 8th, the regular, the regular July 8th, 2025 meeting.
Public hearing.
I'm sorry, public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and that we accepted this, that we approved the minutes from the July 8th, 2025 regular town board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak on agenda items? Agenda items.
Agenda, anything on the agenda only.
All right. So I will make a motion to open the floor to public discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Lynn?
Hi. Is that on? I can't hear. I'm deaf in one ear, so I apologize. I had asked for the board to put on the agenda the 467 exemption and how it was calculated. And I guess I'm a little confused because what's on the agenda is something that was brought up two years ago, and I was told that you weren't going to implement it. I think on the agenda is the medical expenses that you're looking at, the unreimbursed medical expenses. And that's not what I had asked for. It's being calculated differently now than it was originally. The original calculation was based on what the STAR exemption uses, and that's what I was asking you to do. Nobody's asking for an expansion of it. I'm asking for you to look at approving, having it calculated the way the STAR exemption works. And it calculates it on the federal adjusted gross income. It does not add back in the untaxable Social Security. That's an option the town has opted to do. And I would say in doing that, you've probably eliminated quite a few people. I don't know what the numbers were for 2025. Mike, do you know what, how many people are on the STAR exemption for 2025?
The STAR exemption, I don't have those numbers.
What the number is?
I don't have, I have.
Senior star or STAR?
Pardon?
Senior STAR or STAR?
Not the STAR.
Senior STAR. The senior STAR exemption.
Pardon?
The senior STAR exemption. There are two STAR exemptions.
There's a basic STAR and there's a senior. There's an enhanced STAR. I'm not asking about either one of those. I'm asking about the 467 senior exemption.
We don't have that number in front of us.
I'm sorry?
We do not have the final number in front of us.
For 25?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I know they have to be in by March, so they would have had to have been in last March. But anyhow, I just wanted to share some statistics that I found on the New York State website. And I, as I said, I was hoping that you would do, you know, a resolution not to add in the untaxable Social Security. That is an option, and that's what I was asking for. It was my understanding, the last time I brought up the medical expenses, that you weren't going to do that. You can vote on both.
Well, that is my error.
Pardon me?
The fact that the resolution is not what you are requesting is my error.
That's okay.
There are three options.
Yep, I know.
That's one. What you're asking for is the second, and then there's a third possibility of how to calculate that. So we can...
And I would ask that you would, you know, when you put those on for September the 9th, maybe you could do a resolution for the non-taxable Social Security. You can do a resolution for the unreimbursed medical expenses and let the town know where the board stands on it. Because I, as I said, nobody's looking to enhance the program. I'm asking that you put it back the way it was originally put out, and that was based off of the federal adjusted gross income, the same way STAR calculates who is eligible for it. Okay? That's all I was asking for. But I did want to share some statistics that I found on the New York State website. The 467 exemption, overall, the town went up by 40, the county went up by 15, and the school, oddly enough, went down by 200. I don't know why. Red Hook has about 112 people on that 467 exemption. Reinbeck has about 108. Pleasant Valley has 90 people on it, and Hyde Park has 246 people on it. Our town has 85, I believe, on it currently. Now, I went back as far as 2014. So over the last 11 years, that means the number of people that have been added onto that 467 exemption is approximately 2.4. Not a big number. In 2020, you had 25 people. In '21, you had 27. '22, you had 20. In '23, it went to 61, and in '24, it was 85. And I think census has it that the population is about 4,000 something. So having more people on that senior exemption is not going to increase people's taxes immensely. It may be, as it's distributed across, a little bit more. For the people that are not 65, okay, that are under 65, I would encourage you to apply for the basic STAR. At least it's something. Unfortunately, New York State hasn't adopted some of the other things that other states have done. Wyoming chose to restructure their residential, everybody's not classified the same is what I'm trying to say. So people that have second homes get classified differently. People that have a 12-month resident get classified differently, and they've gotten the benefit of having theirs lowered, and people that have second homes have gotten theirs raised a little bit to compensate for that. And then the commercial properties and stuff got raised a little bit to compensate for that, too. So they actually rewarded the people that needed it. And, let's say, Massachusetts basically has what's called a residential exemption for people that are there 12 months out of the year. So they lower your assessment based on what, whether you're here 12 months because you're contributing to the community 12 full months. And they also, and it is quite substantial, the example I looked at actually lowered their taxes by about $1,000. And I think Florida has something that's called a inflation exemption. Unfortunately, New York State doesn't have a whole lot out there right now. But the town does have the option to not have the untaxable Social Security added back in so that people get disqualified for it. So, you know, I would ask and encourage you to please take a look at that, you know? And I would really like to see everybody vote on it. And, you know, if you want to do the unreimbursed medical expenses, fine. But my discussions with Mike two years ago were that it was too much work, and they didn't want to do it. So, and I know he's not real high right now on doing anything with the non-taxable, but I would encourage you to please look at it. It's not that much of a difference that it's going to make. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Lynn.
You're welcome.
I would like to say I thank Lynn for elevating me, but I am one vote out of five. I have no extra say over anything. Is there anyone else on the agenda? I thought I saw someone. All right. I move to return to the regular order of business. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. My comments. The Clinton Town Office's Highway Justice Court will be closed for Labor Day on Monday, September 1st. The library will also be closed that day. East Clinton Fire is holding its 44th Annual Surf and Turf Dinner on Saturday, September 27th. There are two sit-down dinner times at 5:00 PM and 7:00 PM. There's a takeout option scheduled for 6:00 PM. The dinner is $22 for a regular portion and $32 for a super-sized portion. I have no idea what that means.
It's steak and lobster.
Oh, all right. There it is. Surf and turf.
Then you get a knife to cut it.
And for reservations, please call 845-266-5854. Duchess County is accepting household hazardous waste at the Duchess County Fairgrounds in Reinbeck on September 13th from 8:00 AM to 12:30 PM. For a list of items that will be accepted, please visit duchessny.gov/solidwaste. You must register for the event, and registration opens tomorrow. And I also do not have written down, but I received notice from our CAC that they are co-hosting an event with Dutch's Land Conservancy called Exploring Clinton's Water Resources. It's Saturday, September 13th at 11:00 AM in this room. And if you would like more information, please visit the CAC website. Since is September 13th, I will also announce it next month. And that is all I have. Elliot?
I'll just add one item to what Michael said. We have a Board of Assessment Review, which I suspect most of you are familiar with. They are the committee that reviews appeals on taxes, real estate taxes, from year to year. Grievances, I guess is the word I was looking for. Anyway, it's a five-person member. We have one empty seat at the moment. The term begins in September.
October 1st.
This term begins October 1st. It doesn't run on a calendar year, as most committees do. It runs on its own year. Anyway, point is, we are looking for volunteers. If anybody is interested in getting involved in this, in this committee work, Carol will put out a message on her townwide email inviting volunteers. We'll need to start collecting names, if any, and arranging interviews for people who are interested. The idea being to have somebody in place by, well, at least ready to be in place by early October. So I just put that out there for anybody who's interested in getting involved. This is important. The committee only meets once a year, but this is an important aspect of our community, and for people who are interested in this particular topic, this would be a good way to get involved.
Thank you. Town Board reports. Catherine?
All right. The Conservation Advisory Council, the CAC, meets tomorrow in the Masonic Hall at 5:30. All are welcome. I highly recommend that group. From the Planning Board, their last month, they had a discussion about a possible series of townhomes. They did two site plan reviews, one for an ADU and one a special use permit, and they recommended one variance. And the ZBA looked at two variances. And I just want to, I don't do this every month, but I just want to say thank you to all those members of those committees. Those are really hard committees to serve on. They spend a lot of time doing research and site visits, and if you see any of them or you know any of them, please tell them thank you.
Thanks. Charlie?
Thank you. Recreation Committee, we will next rec meeting, August 25th, 2025, 7:00 PM, Fran Mark Park. Please join us. Happy to hear from you. Other activities? Other activities, chess club meets at the Town Hall on the first Monday of each month. Hiking Club will be hiking at the Mills Norrie Point Blue Trail Loop at Margaret Lewis Norrie State Park, boy, that's a mouthful, on Saturday, August 16. Hiking starts at 9:00 AM. Major construction under the new tennis pickleball courts at Friends Park is finished. We had a meeting there last week. Go take a look. They look very nice. Very proud of the job that was done there. So, thank you, Rec Committee. The annual summer concert series ends this Friday, August 12, August 15, at Fran Mark Park. Vito Procedo will be performing, and we'll be having a food truck.
Vito, very popular.
Good to hear Vito's coming. That's it for Recreation. Thank you.
Man?
Okay.
I'm sorry, a couple more thoughts. Hometown Heroes program continues very nicely. I believe, what, five new applications are in and being worked on, and we used some of the grant money remaining to produce a, I think it is, what, three-by-nine-foot banner that says Town of Clinton, Hometown Heroes, to be used at parades, events, and things of that sort. Looks very nice. We're very happy with that. There'll be a resolution regarding Hometown Heroes further on, on the agenda. Regarding cellphone updates, nothing much to report, but I am reminded of our bad cellphone service every time I pull out of my driveway, and I can't get a signal till I reach Millbrook or Rhinebeck. So I share your pain. We are in touch with Verizon, and Senator Hensy's office trying to move up the program to get some better cellphone service in this area. It is critical, it is dangerous, and we're just not happy with it. And that is the urgency involved. Thank you.
Okay. The library part, as Charlie mentioned, the last summer concert will take place at Fran Mark Park Friday, August 15, at 6:30. They're calling it Date Night Clinton Style with Vito Procedo.
Petrosito.
Petrosito. Just say Vito.
Petrosito. Sorry, Vito. Tea Time Book Club will not meet in August, and there will be no storytime on August 19. The library will be closed Monday, September 1, in observance of Labor Day. The physical item total circulation for July was one thousand two hundred and five items, and the digital total circulation was eight hundred and twenty-nine items. The Board of Trustees currently has one vacancy that they are looking to fill. There is also one anticipated vacancy for 2026. Trustees are volunteers who ensure library services match community needs and help plan for the future. To learn more, please reach out to Carol Bancroft, Library Director, or click on the Board of Trustees link on the website, library website. You can also attend a monthly board meeting held the second Monday of every month at 6:30. The public is always welcome at these meetings. Moving on to highway. The road project was Mountain View Road. The ground preparation and paving are completed. Currently, the road finishing and edging is taking place. The project required specialized equipment, skilled labor, and traffic control. The work encompasses the road from end to end and followed New York SOGS contract pricing. There was one significant storm, and tree work had to be done because of the widespread damage caused by July's storm. Storm cleanup involved the entire crew and the highway superintendent during the holiday weekend and over the weeks to follow. Both town-owned equipment and borrowed equipment was needed. Trees were removed using the excavator and the bucket truck to open up roadways. Brush was chipped. The site path cleanup was comprehensive. Dust control is taking place on the unpaved roads, and shared services and the intermunicipal arrangement between the local towns, such as the Town of Mylin, Red Hook, and Rhinebeck and Union Vale, was implemented to help cut costs and offer aid with the Mountain View roadway project. The month of July had two resident requests for a driveway permit renewal. And that's that.
Elliot?
And there was no maintenance issues this month.
Thank you.
Okay. Couple of quick reports from the building inspector. A busy month. They issued thirty-seven permits during the month of July, as opposed to twenty-two the previous month. Almost a fifty percent increase, sixty percent increase perhaps. Twelve COs and CCs issued, thirteen the previous month, five tunnel searches compared to four. And cost of construction, just under one point six million dollars the previous month, about half of that, eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars and change. Zoning enforcement officer reviewed thirty-nine permanent applications. I'm sorry, thirty-five, thirty-nine the previous month. Sixteen of those are active, and nineteen are open. Of the thirty-five, there were eight generator requests, five air conditioning, heating and air conditioning, then there are three renovation, three electrical service, solar energy system, and then a number of twos and ones. So the building folks have been busy. And finally, for the Climate Smart Committee, met on July 22. Their next meeting will be over at the Masonic Hall, August 26. Of course, the public is always welcome. Discussions about grant funding from the Clean Energy Communities Project. We do have a ten thousand dollar grant pending, but we're waiting on information from NYSERTA in terms of how that money should be allocated. The Chair is, and also the Chair of the CAC are doing outreach to Cooperative Extension Dutchess County outreach in terms of developing various environmental initiatives for the town. Also dusting off and working on something called the GOCAP Report, Government Operations Climate Action Plan, which has been sort of in the background for a while, looking at various aspects having to do with transportation, waste recycling, natural resources, and that kind of thing. And then just a general discussion of future projects that the group might want to get involved in. One mentioned was a Repair Cafe, which actually happened here in town about a month ago, I believe, and it was very well-attended. And then further discussions about composting, some sort of a townwide composting or shredding event. Anyway, as I said, meetings are open to the public, and they are, well, the next one coming up on August 26.
Thank you. All business. Elliot?
Okay, so we are going to vote whether to approve the following resolution. Town Board approves Resolution Number Thirty of 2025, adopting Local Law Number One of 2025, entitled Conference Center Hotel and Motel Moratorium. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll say, just for the record, I understand a lot of people have concerns about the moratorium, and they're perfectly entitled to have them and express them, but I think there's one important issue that has been overlooked. We are, in fact, somebody asked about that, and we are working on a new law that will be a pretty major revision of what we have right now in terms of conference centers and hotels, and motels, excuse me, motels as well. Having this moratorium will help enormously in terms of removing the pressure about having to work quickly and perhaps ineffectively to get this done, because now we have a six-month cushion, which should be more than enough time, to do a leisurely, thoughtful, and methodical revision. I think it's very important for people to realize that, even if it doesn't turn the clock back, which is what people want, many people want. It will help enormously in turning the clock forward, and I think we have to keep that in mind.
I would say also, I understand that many people want this to cover things that are already in the pipeline. We are obligated by law that this moratorium can only be for six months. So if we backdated it the six months, it would already be expired, and the applications in the pipeline would be active. So we are looking forward to give us the full six months to work on a new law.
Let's call for a vote.
Sure.
Roll call.
Yeah.
A roll call vote. I say aye.
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 Motion carries. Number two has my name, but really it's Catherine and Elliot.
Well, as Michael indicated, Catherine and I are working on creating a committee to revisit the Comprehensive Plan, which is overdue, but such things happen. The plan we've worked out, and Catherine, you'll jump in if I misspeak.
Okay.
We'll have ten members. We'll have the two of us. We'll have a volunteer chair, who has not been designated yet, but will be. We will have one member from each of the three boards, major boards in town, from the ZBA, the Planning Board, the CAC. They will choose, the boards will choose their members, their representatives. And what we'd also like to do is include four people who, from the general public, who are not affiliated with the town. And once again, the town clerk, Carol Mackin, will send out a notice at some point inviting, encouraging volunteers. This is very important, clearly, because whatever we come up with, we're probably going to have to live with for a good many years. And there's been a lot of talk recently about, excuse me, about the Comprehensive Plan and how it should be changed or altered or modified or what have you. Well, this is the chance you have for input. If people really want to have input into the document that comes out of this committee, they should apply. They should volunteer. I mean, I would expect we'll have one meeting a month, and, I don't know, does that sound reasonable?
That sounds reasonable. I do think it's, you should know that it will be a lengthy process, because it's just, it's a big document, and we have to be careful, and we have to be precise. So we encourage you to apply, but please know that it will be not a huge day-to-day commitment, but it will be a lengthy commitment.
Right. So sign up for the town email if you're not on it, because that's the best way to keep apprised of what's going on in town, but also specifically in terms of these announcements, like, for example, the BAR, or applying for the Comp Plan Committee. So, and that's pretty much where we stand at the moment.
Aye. And can you ask Catherine?
Nope. I'm good. Thank you.
Number three, Catherine?
I don't have any updates on the playground equipment. Talked to Dan and Carol about it a little bit, but that's all very slowly in the works.
Yeah, I, they have new equipment at Friends, still in packaging.
Yes.
So anything I just said that Charlie knows, too, is kept in loop as a liaison. I've spoken to them about grant opportunities, so...
Yeah, we got to do that, because it's not an inexpensive proposition.
It isn't. You'd be amazed at how expensive playground equipment is.
It runs into the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Wow. It's crazy. All right. Number four, I just wanted to give an update on the zoning revision process. So out of the recent numerous public hearings we've had, there have been some small changes. I know site plans have got changed, ADUs, little existing violations, definitions. So in the, by the end of this week, all those changes will be incorporated. We then have to send it down to Dutchess County Planning. They usually take about thirty days for zoning laws, but this is big. So I expect they'll take longer than thirty days. When we get their comments back, we will take into account their comments and then have, introduce it officially as a final law, have a public hearing, and a vote on whether to fasten or not. So that is the plan going forward. Any other conversation?
Sure.
All right. New business. Catherine?
So this is the 467 senior exemption that Lynn spoke about, but Carol, I want to defer to you for a second on procedure. If this is not what she requested, do we just leave it off for this month, and we do the one that's requested next month?
So the way to execute this tax exemption is by local law. So if you've decided that this is not the local law that you want to introduce, you can just now ignore this and just take it off the agenda.
All right.
And come back next month with the same process. So you're going to introduce the local law the way that Lynn has presented it to us, if that's what the board wants to do.
Yeah. I'm private. Anyone else?
All right. Great. Thank you.
All right, then.
Did you hear that? I'm sorry? Did you hear that? No, I did not. So it will be on the agenda next month? It will be on the agenda next month, the way you requested? Okay. So on the ninth, then, will both of them be on there?
No, it'll just be one of the options.
Okay.
The one you want.
Okay. So the Social Security will be on that one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Elliot?
Okay. I'll move the Town Board approves a Resolution Number Thirty-two of 2025, a resolution supporting the Justice Court Assistance Program. Is there a second?
Second.
Want to give a little background?
Yeah, I would like a little.
Please.
If you can. I don't know this one, really.
If you could read the resolution.
Yeah.
So essentially, the state requires that...
Okay. Whereas state of New York Unified Court System solicits this applications from local governments under the Justice Court Assistance Program to assist local departments with funding, and whereas this funding available on the New York State would facilitate local efforts to upgrade the Town Justice Department, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of the Town of Clinton authorizes the Clinton Town Court to apply for a J-CAP grant in the upcoming grant cycle of up to thirty thousand dollars. So that's what we're voting on.
Sorry about that.
The court administration requires a certain language in order to qualify for the grant, and that language is found in the resolution.
Okay. Discussion?
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there a second? We have a second. Is there a discussion? Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Uh...
Try again. Okay, here we go. Town Board approves the following resolution. Fireworks display at Seven Laurin Lane on August 31, 2025, and the temporary blocking of Laurin Lane at Hollow Road, as per the requirements of the building inspector. All conditions of the permit have been met, and the fee has been paid. We have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mariner Charlie? I think this is...
Do I do this one, Charlie?
Be it resolved that the Town Board approves Resolution Number Thirty-three of 2025, of the 2025-2026 Snow and Ice Control Agreement between the Town of Clinton and Dutchess County.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Second.
Any... Any discussion?
This is, I followed the email trail, but this is the same amount as last year, or it is?
It is the same.
The same. Great. Thank you.
And so what this is, is we plow and salt 16.43 miles of county roads, our highway department does, and the county pays us about $96,937 this year to do that. And we use that money to pay for the bonds that buy our new plow trucks and other trucks. That's all I have. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Charlie?
Be resolved that the Town Board approves the following resolution, Number 34 of 2025, regarding the Hometown Heroes Banner Program. Any discussion?
Is there a sec?
Second.
All in favor? Go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion first.
Any discussion?
Can you explain what we're doing here for a second?
Yeah. This simply says that the Town of Clinton owns the Hometown Heroes program. There's been some abuse in the program around the country, sandwich shops. If you Google it, some real estate agent is using the term in Florida. We're not going to let that happen in the Town of Clinton regarding our veterans. The likeness, images, pictures, information is owned by the town and the participants, and will remain so, in possession of the town. Anybody wishes to use the Hometown Hero program for any program needs to come to me or the town supervisor for written permission. Simply protecting the integrity of our veterans.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion?
Sounds great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Other items? Resignations?
We have one resignation. The Town Board, the Town Board accepts the resignation of HMO Stephen Gianoni, effective August 12th, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Warrants.
Be resolved that the Town Board approves the August General Fund Warrant vouchers number 348 through 399 totaling $52,701.14, and the August Highway Fund Warrant vouchers numbered 229 through 256 totaling $401,876.88. And the August Capital Fund Warrant vouchers number 10 through 13 totaling $152,823.26. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that the Town Board approves the following resolution. Be it resolved that Town Board approves Resolution Number 35 of 2025, a motion to move funds at the August 12th, 2025 Town Board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion to approve the July 2025 Supervisor Report. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Any other announcements? All right. We are ready for a public discussion on anything involving the town. I make a motion to open the floor to public discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Lynn.
I don't think she heard you.
You're right.
When you say it's going to be on the agenda, is it going to be on the agenda for a vote?
It's a, it's a process. We have to introduce it. Then we have to have a public hearing.
Okay.
And then we'll vote.
So the September 9th public hearing is going to be for the medical?
No. September 9th will be the introduction of the new law.
Okay.
There will be a public hearing and a vote in October.
In October?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So any senior should show up for that if they can. Right.
A public hearing, I would say, yes.
Couple more statistics that I kind of wanted to run by you also, and let you know. I had also looked up the Ag and Forest exemptions, and from 2020 to 2024, there's around 200 of them. And I just kind of wonder how many of those are valid. Because I know of a piece of property that got sold that had an exemption on it, the exemption stayed with the house, and the new people have that advantage. I don't know. My opinion is, and I'm not an expert, but when you buy a house, whatever exemptions are on it should be dropped, and the new person should have to apply for those, I would think. Yeah, there's, I can give you an example of it if you're not convinced, but those exemptions, I just wonder how many out of the 200 are actually valid, but anyhow, it was just something I had looked up. And the other thing I wanted to mention too, the star exemption, there's like 430 people out of 4,000. And the enhanced star, there's 236 that have that. There's a lot of different veteran exemptions also. But if you haven't applied for the enhanced star or the star exemption, I think they're still valid. I would encourage you to. Thank you for putting that on the board, the evening agenda for next month.
Anyone else?
Rich Morse from Hollow Road. As the budget discussions will be getting underway here fairly soon, I'd like to bring your attention to a situation in town that needs some aid. The Town of Clinton Food Pantry, which is administered by Pleasant Plains Presbyterian Church, and they're doing a fabulous job, but they're getting requests many more than they've had in the past. The library has done a food request program and given quite a bit of food. The Friends of Clinton have done the same thing, I think, twice, but they're still feeling quite a shortage. I think that the Town of Clinton bought to support the Town of Clinton Food Pantry with a token payment every month to help situation be resolved. Couple of hundred bucks a month as you pass money around, you could, you could find someplace to get that from, if you can't ask me. And I just want to bring it up, you know, before somebody says the budget's made and you got to come next year. Well, this is the year before next year, so please keep it in mind.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Town Board. Dana Veeth, Brown Spahn Road. I'm here to, tonight to petition to get our road blacktopped.
What, I'm sorry, what road, Dana?
Brown Spahn.
Brown Spahn.
Yep. In the past 17 years of being on the road, significant traffic increase, deliveries, people getting lawn care, X, Y, Z, it's just become an issue with a lot of dust at our house, as well as when the power goes out, seems like we're one of the last roads to get service back due to the complaint from Central Hudson about inaccessibility due to the road conditions and stuff like that. So that's why I'm here tonight, just to express my concern, to get the road paved.
Do you have a petition?
Not yet.
Oh, okay. You said you were petitioning.
Well, no, Todd told me to come tonight.
Okay, no worries.
So this is just my first.
Yep. Okay.
First go-through, so just wanted to.
We have, we collected signatures of all, of as many neighbors as we could.
Okay.
But nothing completely formal for through the town or anything like that.
So just the processes, you've got to submit that to the town clerk.
Okay.
Okay? And then we'll work with the highway superintendent and the town board, and then we'll move your petition forward.
Okay.
Okay? If you have any questions, I mean, certainly you call Todd, but you call the town clerk's office, too. We'll set you up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
You know me, going once. All right. I make a motion to return to regular order of business. Is there a second?
Second.
Absolutely.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you, everyone.